All right, so okay, okay to, okay to start?
Yep.
All right, okay, so we will. We will call the meeting to order at seven forty-eight. Item two on the agenda is FY two thousand twenty-two closeout, and so I think we go to Nick for that?
Sure, Amy, we just wanted to give a brief update, Amy, if you could, just on terms of where we're at now.
Sure, Lisa Cool and I are finishing the closeout of the books. We've been working on free cash as well as working with the assessor on the tax recap. We hope to have the free cash certification request filed by the end of the month. I know they're really busy at D O R, so I'm not sure what the turnaround will be. But I have a call with our rep tomorrow to go over a few questions because some things have changed since I was here before. And then we'll just, I don't like to close out the books until I'm sure that that's passed. D O R inspection and then I'll close out the books with the auditors and. I assume that the financial reports will come shortly after that.
And that's usually outstanding item, Amy, that, that, the free cash number?
Yeah, cuz I find things, sometimes I find mistakes or things that got missed when I'm going through that process. We also have to do schedule A and. That'll be next on my priority list along with, obviously, we've rolled out the. Some of the budget templates, but the schedule A, we won't receive if it's not filed by a certain time, they'll hold back the local aid. Payments, so that's important to prioritize as well.
And will you feel comfortable, Amy, discussing that free cash number in advance? Of the certification request at the end of the month, or do you wanna? I just wanna make sure.
Until it's certified.
Okay, fair, well, 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 the request, well, until it's certified, but we're gonna know what the request is.
Well, I don't give them what I think the number is. It's, it's not like I put in and say, I think free cash is.
Oh, you're gonna give, you're gonna give them our F Y, F Y twenty-two and then they're gonna generate the number for it.
Yeah, and then what I do while they're doing that is I'll try to calculate it myself.
Right.
It's not a really straightforward calculation, but I can tell you the starting point. Is often the turnbacks in revenue and excess of what was budgeted. But there's a lot, a lot of other things that factor into it that if I get one thing wrong, that number can swing significantly. So that's why I always err on the side of caution. But I hope that when we submit it, everything will be in great order and exactly how they need to see it so that. Their review process on their end goes smoothly.
Last question for me, timing on the, on the tax recap, we're gonna have that by early December or?
I think we have to wait until after town meeting because of the additional appropriation, but. Charlie O'Shea, the new assessor, and I have been working on all of the schedules that go into it. So I believe the assessors are gonna meet later this week just to kinda see where that stands. But for the most part, ninety percent of it is loaded into Gateway, which is the online system that we submit things to the D O R.
Yep.
So I think it's in decent shape. We've had a little bit of some bumps because. I've been removed from it so long and Charlie's somewhat new to that piece of the job. So we've been working very closely together to just kinda work through it. And part of our call this week with D O R is to just go over all of our questions. We're gonna ask them if they could take a look at what's submitted. What's entered before we actually submit so that on December sixth, the day after town meeting. Our plan is just we hit. After the tax reclassification or whatever that meeting is then on the.
We're gonna have that on the sixth, I think, right?
Yeah, so our plan is hopefully they'll have time at D O R to go through it and we'll just. Know everything's in good order so that when we get to that date, it's their review processes quick.
Thank you, comments or questions on items, item two? Hearing none, item three, financial forecast for F Y twenty-four, F Y twenty-eight. Who want, who's, who's gonna take this one?
I'll, I'll introduce it and then turn it back over to Amy, so. As we had discussed at our prior meetings, we've been trying to pull together forecasts to get to guide some of our conversations about twenty-four and beyond. On the revenue side, you know, it's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of different revenue category or categories that Milton benefits from. Between property taxes, new growth and local receipts, we're looking at about, you know, three million dollars of new money, give or take. In each year, state aid obviously is, is a different additional revenue category and the town has benefited from the. Increases to state aid and the changes in that formula in the recent years. And I think with the change in the governor's office, we might see a continued dedication and support of those line items on the state aid front, but. To be determined, the governor's budget typically comes out in mid-January, so we'll have a pretty good idea of where things are landing at that point. But in order to kinda go through it a little bit more specificity, I'll share my screen to pull it up. And then I'll ask Amy to talk through on the expense side, kind of what we did. To just provide a high level, basic forecast. So just start the conversation and any questions or further information that folks think we should include, we're happy to. If, you know, you have any comments after the meeting, feel free to let us know, but I'll share my screen now and ask Amy to take it from there.
Great, in the, in that moment, I'll take a mo, I'll take the moment to say hi, Janet. Feels like, it feels like six or seven years ago to see you again. And you haven't changed, you haven't changed a bit.
Great to see you, Mike. Nice to be here again.
Stay, stay as long as you want.
Thank you.
Okay, should I take it away? Nick, could you just scroll it down a little to show that all important bottom negative number? Thank you, so basically, the purpose of this forecast is just a very basic roll forward of the F Y twenty-three budget through twenty-eight. It's a very simplistic approach, but it, it gets the message of, in my opinion. That this is probably the best case scenario. And we could spend months and months going digging a deep dive into these numbers and at the end of the day. This indicates that we are looking at a shortfall in, a projected shortfall in twenty-four through twenty-eight. So basically, what we did for the expense computations is we did it overall, took the F Y twenty-three. Budget, we rolled forward general expenses by five percent. And we rolled forward salary and wages by six percent. And the reason why it's six percent is not a cola, I wanna make sure that that's clear to everybody. But that's to account for steps, lanes and cola adjustments. And any other contractual increases in the collective bargaining agreements. So basically, I think there may be, hold on a minute here. We made the assumption that we, and when the pension plan is fully funded. In twenty-seven, that the differential between. What's required going forward and the level. Before it was fully funded would go to O P E B, I understand that that's not a formal policy, but. Over the last several years, there have been discussions that that may be something the town would like to consider. I believe there is a policy. That we'll be discussing related to this at some point. Also, the assumption is that unless there's free cash or other funding sources available, that. The numbers for stabilization funds, cap save, general save. O P E B, other than what I just talked about, would be at zero, and that's just for this basic. Projection. Again, over, oversimplified, but I think it gets the message across. Trying to think what else. Basically. The projection shows a shortfall of almost two point seven million for twenty-four. Which if we do nothing. Would increase significantly through twenty-eight. The other thing I'd like to point out is in the F Y twenty-three budget, there were several positions for the schools. And town that was funded with ARPA. And there is a page in this forecast at the end that shows what those are, but that's an additional. Additional items that we should consider when going forward because some of these are considered to be ongoing needs. And we don't wanna lose sight of those, so that was a tune of a million five for twenty-three. The number you see at the bottom of the screen for twenty-four, three ninety-five. That's not the need, that is all that's funded of the million four through ARPA for twenty-four, so what that means is. All of those positions that aren't funded, if they're not rolled into the operating budget, would be lost. So that's an additional potential need of a million dollars.
And, and Amy, that, just to, just to interject, that, that, those positions are not included in the two point six, seven, five shortfall number.
Correct, and there is at least approximately three hundred thousand.
Yep.
Minimum on the school side that during the F Y twenty-three budget discussions. Was made very clear that they were special education needs that. Were considered, we would more than likely be ongoing needs for the future.
So Amy, could we get it, I don't know if we have it, I can't remember if we have it in this packet, can we get a projection for F Y twenty-four with those positions included?
Well, so I would say that it would be the two point six, seven, five.
Yeah.
Plus a million, which is the unfunded. The difference between the million four seventy-four and the three ninety-five.
Okay.
So we're looking. So it's about three point seven.
Okay, if we could just get that, so we could have the, you know, just get that breakdown, I think that'll be helpful.
Okay.
I think that'd be helpful, questions or comments on? Thank you, Frankie, thank you, this is, this is very helpful. And I know you jumped right in and I, and this is, this, this is very helpful and, and to Nick and to Amber as well, questions or comments?
Mike, I have a couple. Amy, thank you for, for all this work and Nick as well and everybody else. When you do the projection with including the ARPA. For F Y twenty-four, so that million dollars, is that? That would also have to be calculated for the rest of the projections, correct? So it's not just we need this for twenty-four, there's probably some wiggle room, but not much, so we would also need to. Escalate that with the steps and lanes and so the six percent increase across the board as well, correct? Okay, and then for income that we've received, I noticed there's a couple of lines here that add two point five levy, is that a standard? Thing that we do annually?
Yeah, that's prop two and a half, that's.
Oh, thank you, okay, yep. Yeah, if you had said prop two and a half, I would've gotten it. And then the new growth is what we're expecting for new homes, new whatever here in town, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Really good work, this is amazing to look at, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments, oh, go ahead, sorry.
One other note I wanna make is Glenn and I did talk about the school number as well as the town number. And there may be other needs that have come about since the twenty-three budget was done, including ARPA. That wouldn't be factored in here, so I don't want people to think that this is all in, like. As we go through the F Y twenty-three and future years, needs change, so there could be additional items. That would be needed, or perhaps some things would shift on the ARPA list, if that makes sense what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, no, I think we all understand, yeah, I think Amy and you all understand this is kind of a guidepost and that they're gonna be, they're gonna be ins and outs, but this is, this gives us a general. Operating outlook, other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll say I just finished rolling over school salaries. And the numbers I'm getting are in concert for twenty-four with what Amy has, so I think that's a. If, in fact, I think Amy's are probably a little conservative, so I mean, the, the, what little good news there is, I said, I think I'm a little under her for salaries for twenty-four. But, um, yeah, it's, we're, we certainly look like we're in the right ballpark, I mean, the idea that, you know, you have. You have to allow like, what, two point two percent for steps generally in a given year for the schools and then you put the cost of living on it. You know, six percent, maybe a little high, but that's all right, at least at this point, you wanna be high rather than low, so I think that's working. I haven't done anything on the, on the non-salary side yet, so, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the two big ones, there of course are utilities. And special ed out of district. And the O S T is given preliminary approval for special ed out of district for fourteen percent raise, which is incredible. So we'll have to see how that plays out. I, there'd be a lot of pushback from communities for any kind of a raise of that size. So we'll have to see how that works, but luckily, you know, on the utility side, at least on electricity, we're good halfway through twenty-four with our bid. But, you know, we'll, we have to take into account natural gas still. Which is, you know, now the schools are heated with natural gas, first, once upon a time they were electric. Because once upon a time, natural gas was the better alternative, so who knows?
Thanks, Glenn, that's, that's helpful. Other comments or questions? All right, so this, a couple of things, Amy. So in these, these projections, we are, we're talking about O P E B and Affordable Housing Trust at zero, is that?
Yes, until twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when I redirected. I made the assumption that the retirement decline, the funding for that would go down to O P E B.
And the, and the group insurance increase, the five percent there, that's based on historical trends or? I know we've had, that, that's been, that's been kind of a roller coaster, it seems to me, in, in prior years, it's been, it's been way up some years and we've had some benefit other years, is that kind of a, is that a, an average?
So yes, but since I pulled this together just end of last week, we did meet with our insurance advisors and. That's looking like they're telling initial projection is closer to six or seven.
Okay, and they're, and they're projecting out five years as well, or that, that's just for next year?
For next year.
For next year, okay.
Just medical costs are increasing like everything else.
Yep, yep.
So that may be a little low.
Okay, but that's a, that's probably a fair plug just for the purpose of the projection. Let's see, we're estimating free cash and capital non-bonded at zero as well, so, okay. The three percent increase in chapter seventy and unrestricted, that, is that the? Is that the, is that based on the, the new numbers that we've, we've gotten last year and that we're projecting, or is that just, is that a conservative? Projected increase? I'm sorry, not, I, I'm sorry to go off the, off the chart, Amy, we're, we're talking about a three, one of the assumptions is a three percent increase in chapter seventy and unrestricted local aid.
I think it's two percent.
Oh, okay, the last sheet you had on the assumptions, it had it at three percent.
Oh, okay, I think I changed it.
Okay.
I'll have to check which number I used cuz I have two percent on the cover sheet and I don't remember to be honest with you.
Okay.
It's just a, a general guess that doesn't. Really take into account the Student Opportunity Act, which I think could make it a little bit more favorable, but that's so hard to. Like, get a handle on for me, so I would have to work with Glenn closer on really diving into that number.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I have on my plate to, to look at as to what the S O A is now, because it was. I understood it once and then they changed it around a bit, now we have to go back and look and see where we are and what they've done and what it is going forward.
Yeah, I mean, that, just at, at first blush, that seemed pretty conservative to me and, and always good to be conservative, but that. If, if that's, if that's way on the low end, if we're talking about, you know, as opposed to two, if we're talking about four or five, then. You know, that's a, that's a, that's a significant difference, it seems to me. Other, other comments or questions on the projection? All right, thanks again for this, this will be a ongoing organic. Process with the projections as we get new numbers in. And why don't we go to item four, which is zeroing in on F Y twenty-twenty-four?
Chair, so I, just in terms of where we are at, we have sent out budget guidance to departments, we've asked for budgets to come back with. You know, no changes to their budget other than what's required for salary increases, step increases. You know, any colas that have already been approved. As well as any contractual increases that are required on their operating side, so pretty limited budget guidance, but I had. In my guidance that I sent out said, if there are needs that your department has or is facing essentially supplemental. Requests, you know, bring them to a budget meeting with myself and Amy, which we're starting to, to schedule now. For this week, next week and the following week, so our goal is to, you know, overall guidance has been pretty limited, but. With the message that, you know, bring, bring your additional ideas and requests to that budget meeting so we can discuss them from there. And then, you know, we're expecting budgets in this week, start pulling those together, so that's kinda where we're at in the process. I, we had included this item on the agenda in case you wanted to talk more specifically about any additional guidance on twenty-four, but that's, that's what we've taken so far on the town side.
So, so Nick, we're, you know, the, what you, what you're talking about is, I think what we, we typically call level service, a level service budget?
Correct.
Okay, okay, comments or questions on F Y, and just, just, are we using, just going, just as our, as our initial. Thought here, are we using the F Y twenty-twenty-four projection? In Amy's. In Amy's five-year projection, is that what we're, we're kind of using as our guidepost?
That's, yeah, that's, we've been working on this for a while, so that's kind of where we expected the number to come in, based on our preliminary thoughts about it, so. That's, at, at this time, we're gathering information from our department heads and getting those budget templates filled out so that if. You know, once we have kind of more concrete decisions about our next steps, we can, you know, adjust from there.
In terms of timeline. When do you, when do you think you're gonna have something that, that we can see and that we can recommend to the select board and that was gonna go on to the? The warrant committee, what are you thinking about in terms of timeline?
So budgets due back this week. Budget meetings are, with department heads are being scheduled as we speak, so I'd say a couple of weeks. Would probably be about when we can have a, a big picture conversation about where, where requests are coming in at and what we think for fiscal twenty-four on the town departmental side.
Okay, do, do we wanna, do we wanna have something baked before the, baked before the end of the year, are we thinking January, what? Now, I'm just thinking about when, when, when we get something to the warrant committee so they can get going.
I, I reached out to Dave Humphries actually yesterday to have that conversation to figure out, you know. I think historically, we, we try to get everything to them. By the end of January in terms of a final proposal, but in preliminary budgets, that, the date is usually December first, obviously, what changes that. We are not likely to meet that December first deadline, but I wanted to have a conversation with him about what his expectations are, the warrant committee's expectations. So that we're delivering on the timeline that they want. So that's something, that's a conversation that we need to have, but the goal would be to have pretty high level agreement on kind of where we're at and departmental side and then, and fine tune that in the month of December.
Okay, thanks, Nick, comments or questions on item four?
Just for your information, on the school side, we had finance committee met last week with a couple directors, meeting today with some principals and department heads, next week with more. The goal is to have a school committee recommendation for the beginning of December meeting to go forward with a, a budget proposal.
This, okay, so, and so, so you're, you're thinking you'll get something to the warrant committee sometime in December?
That'd be the goal.
Yeah, that's not atypical, right, Betty? Betty, you're on mute?
So we, just on that note, we have to leave cuz I have to go up to the central office to have the meeting at eight-thirty with the principals, but. Moving forward, we have a standing eight-thirty school subcommittee finance meeting every week moving forward, so. If we can think about a different time to do this meeting, that would be helpful, if possible.
What day of the week is your meeting, Betty, is it, is it on Tuesday?
Tuesdays, Tuesdays, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can work around that, we can, I, I have no burning desire to meet it on Tuesday at eight o'clock, so we can. We'll, we'll work, we'll work, we'll work around, we'll work around Janet's schedule on that, just kidding. All right, anything else on item four, F Y twenty-four? I think that's the last thing, the school, I mean, the school committee is welcome to talk about financial policies in ARPA. And our minutes, if you wish, but, but otherwise.
I'm already at the school, so I'll hang a little bit.
All right, all right, yeah, no, you might find out the O P E B discussion, interesting, you might be the only one. Excuse me? Oh, sorry, Jay, sorry, sorry, Jay, of course, we gotta get that up to Jay so he can take a look at it.
Thanks for the projections, this was immensely helpful in being able to see directionally where things are going. I think it helps inform the way we think, so have a wonderful rest of your day.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, you too. Bye, school committee.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.
All right, item five, financial policies, we have the draft and, and we would have, we would have got it to our unofficial consultant, Mr., Mr. Funling, but it just came in last night, so. So we'll, we'll, you know, certainly publish the draft, thank you for this, Nick, this is, this is very helpful. Do you wanna, do you wanna kinda introduce it, this is item five, financial policies, and we're talking specifically about a draft O P E B. Other post-employment benefits liabilities policy.
Sure, so when I first started, this is something that treasurer Jim McLaughlin, McCalliff had mentioned to me. That Standard and Poor's had been, or S and P had been asking for in previous rating calls and the, and the communication from the town and those meetings has always been. The board and others have always discussed that generally, the town intends to transition to funding O P E B with any savings. From its annual pension payment, once the pension, the retirement system is fully funded after fiscal year twenty-six. So the goal is to transition from just speaking about that verbally and trying to put something in writing and have it more formally adopted by the town. So what I have done is rather than trying to recreate an O P E B policy from scratch, copied and pasted from the policies that. The Department of Revenue has been recommending to cities and towns when they go in and do a financial policy manual. They do that in a number of cities and towns and those financial policy manuals are online. So what they do there is they create a basis for the policy. And then they leave it up to the city or town to make a statement and a commitment in that policy, so the background information is pretty standard and pretty typical. But then when you get to the bottom as to what the town commits to do is where you'll see differences from community to community. So we drafted this based on, like I said, the template from D O R, I worked on it with. Our financial team here in Milton shared it around, made some changes based on some feedback just about who does what. Where O P E B is invested currently, and just so you know, it's currently invested with essentially the state pension investment system. So we're not funding it or paying investors separately for management, managing and investing those funds. And then getting back to the, that's in both of it, the policy as drafted sticks to kind of what I picked up as has been the stated intention. Which would be that, once the pension system is fully funded after fiscal year twenty-six. That additional payment that the town has been making to catch up and get to fully funding. Would transition over. would transition over in its entirety to OPEB to start paying down our long term liability on OPEB and our net liability is about $165 million as of June 30, 2022. And I did ask our actuary who does prepares our annual OPEB report, which is Odyssey, to run two different scenarios. If the town funded it at about $5 million, which is approximately that additional pension payment, or if the town took half of that, just to kind of show a comparison as to what the two different scenarios look like. And I will pull that up right now, just to share it so folks can see it, the two different scenarios. The first one at $5 million, beginning in fiscal 27, increasing by two and a half percent a year thereafter. And gets the OPEB liability of fully funded in 2047. If the town committed, and I just, for discussion sake, I used half that number, so two and a half million dollars. It would take to 2060, which isn't even included on the on the sheet to show that. But it's 2048 versus 2060, 12 year difference in reaching full funding. And just for a little bit of sense of what we pay each year, the town's actual payments to cover retiree health insurance costs are about three and a half million dollars. What you see here and what's labeled number six employer share of benefit payments. They have it at about five, 5.2, 5.5. And the reason for that is they include what they call an implicit cost, which is the idea that since retirees typically use more of their health insurance, that the share in premiums doesn't actually reflect active versus employee, what their actual costs are. So it's not on an annual basis, we're paying about three and a half million dollars for retiree health insurance. The way the OPEB calculation is done includes this idea that retiree premium in theory should be hot, the retiree's share of the premium should be a little bit higher to capture what their usage actually is. So it's not a perfect number right here for thinking about that. So we're paying about three and a half million dollars a year to cover retiree health insurance benefits, which if OPEB were fully funded, would be paid from the trust rather than paid from our operating budget on an annual basis. So the goal would be to get the OPEB fully funded at some point in the future so that these costs are now paying paid out of the trust rather than hitting the town's operating budget on an annual basis. So that's kind of the big picture. Happy to discuss in more detail and answer any questions.
Comments or questions on the the trust? Well, this is actually in the policy. Jay?
Yeah, so the what you said about the split and the assumed assumed increase, does that mean we're not tracking benefit payments split by retiree versus employee? I'm a little confused about that.
We are. It's in the it's in the OPEB reports every year and they're available on our website.
Okay.
It's just in the sheet, the way they show it is they 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 roll in that implicit cost rather than just the actual premium payments that the town is making on behalf of retirees.
I'm sorry, that's where you lost me.
So ask a question again, I'm sorry.
So we track what we're paying for employees specifically, so aren't they just projecting that? Then what are they projecting forward with an implicit cost?
They're saying so. They're saying that if we more accurately, and I don't want to go down this too deeply because it's just.
You answered my question, which is we do track claims different for employees or retirees. Okay, you answered my question. Thank you. Okay.
Other comments or questions?
The draft looks good, Nick. I did take a look at that. It does. It looks totally fine and on par with other things that I've seen, so.
Sure, thank you.
And I agree with that. I just had a couple of questions just in terms of drafting. We have specific, we call it specific numbers for FY 22. And I guess that's important to set a baseline, but just in terms of the policy. And we also call out well, it's we actually lay out the numbers for FY 22. I guess that makes sense. I just, you know, since it's an organic policy that that kind of fault, those numbers kind of fall away after four or five years of a policy being in place. And so so the only question that I had is, do we? Do we include that? If not, it's probably important as a baseline, so we know where we're starting from. But that was one question I had. And then the other one was we said, we say in here that we will appropriate a minimum of $100,000. I think we probably want to hedge that a little bit and say we we plan to and we intend to or something like that, because things arise and emergencies arise and we have issues. So I think our policy doesn't want to be, we don't want to have that kind of mandatory language in there in the event that we have some kind of emergency. And then so if we if we if we do hit the 100,000 a year, although our projections from our discussion earlier have it at zero, right? From FY 24 to 28, we're projecting funding at zero, and this policy we're saying 100,000. Where do we if we if we if we have 100,000 come in every year, does that get us where we want to be in FY 26?
So that contribution is, I think we the intention behind having a nominal contribution in the next few years is just to show again to the ratings agencies that the town use this seriously. I think I just pulled the $100,000 number because that's in the ballpark of what the town had looked at in past years. And I think the source of it would be free cash, so we didn't include any uses of free cash in the projection. So that's that's one factor as to why we wouldn't have included at that point. And in speaking with exchanging emails with Odyssey, Parker Elmore at Odyssey, he even indicated that the two and a half percent increase on an annual basis wouldn't make a substantial difference. So when we achieve full funding, so from his perspective, these nominal payments in the first few years don't have a substantial impact to the OPEB liability in one direction or the other. It's more about showing the town's intention and that we're falling through one things that we stated that we would do about OPEB. Where we make progress is by shifting a significant portion of our annual payment from the pension system over. And the question is kind of what number do we want to arrive at?
Do we? Nick, do you know if we lose anything in terms of the rating agencies, if we if we hedge the language at all? And say that, you know, it's our intention or our plan or so, rather than making it mandatory and saying that we will put that 100K in?
I don't. I don't think so. I think I would say including it as a goal in in the financial policies is sufficient. I know in Medfield, when we drafted them, we had a higher goal, but it was a goal and it was a goal to increase that and on an annual basis.
Yeah. And and at the end of the day, it's going to be what we do. They're going to look at what we do, not what we say anyway. So I just don't want to. I just don't want to have have it mandatory for us.
Understood.
I don't want to be breaking the breaking, breaking the policy when we when we when we come up. I see Jay asking in the in the chat if the library, if the liability is 165 or 128, I think we have it at 165.
Yeah, it had been over 200 million in the prior year, but with some changes that the Odyssey had done based on experience and investments, they they dropped that down pretty significantly from 21 to 22.
Well, then why does the exhibit show 128? Or 133? Again, not not to get into details of the spreadsheet, but that's a big one, if I'm reading right.
I will follow up on that piece. He didn't address that question coming back to us, so. That's a good catch. I appreciate it. As we indicated, this all came together last night. So I think the point there is if it would do, we actually reach full funding when they say we will, just to make sure that we're all starting from the same baseline. The valuation report as of June 30, 22 states a unfunded liability of about 165 million. And so I'll just I'll circle back with Odyssey on this question, Jay. Good eyes.
Okay. So.
Oh, go ahead, Jay.
Are we discussing the policy right now or what are we discussing?
Yeah, the what's on the financial policies.
So yeah, I mean, you know, I've heard for years that the idea is to take what we're, you know, the reduction in pension cost and put it in there. I've sent several people emails in the past few days, sort of drilling down into, okay, what is the number? I mean, Nick sort of answered that by saying 5 million, you know, we don't have to say, is it 5.137 million or is it 4.86 million? Okay, you know, for discussion purposes, this is this is good. Sometime in the next four years, we'll want to really say maybe the answer really is 5 million, but and then there's questions like, what if we start funding the OPEB and then suddenly the pension becomes underfunded, which it happens? Does that change our OPEB strategy? Again, we can kick that down the road for two or three years, but that's the kind of questions we'll want to think through. But a bigger question, I, you know, funding by 2047 is is much faster and much more aggressive than I ever thought we would be. One question is, do we want to fully fund it? If you fully fund a liability, which can change, as you said, you know, a change in assumptions moved our liability from 200 million to 165 million. If in the year 2047, we're driving our flying cars and the OPEB liability drops again by 20%, while we've we've fully funded it and when we didn't have to and we can't get that money back. You know, just just something to think about, you know, what is our goal? It may not be so bad if our goal is let's be 75% funded by a certain year.
Yeah, and we don't lay that out. We don't. We don't say that. We don't call out that date in the policy. So I think for the purposes of this, I think I think that's a good discussion to have, whether we whether we want to bring, pull that out or pu- push it out or pull it back, right? But the policy doesn't really, the policy doesn't address a specific date, so I think we're okay on that.
But would the and again, we're writing policy for people 20 years from now, but would the policy say increase it by two and a half percent? Obviously, you can revise the policy whenever you want to revise the policy, but with with some suggestion of you know, revisit this policy when we're more than 50% funded.
Yeah, that's interesting. That's interesting.
And also, you know, I keep seeing the the pension policy and the OPEB policy, I think it would be nice to have them go hand in hand. And the pension, the last report I saw said, after we fully fund it, we'll still be paying what's called the normal cost, which is the benefits that the employees accrue during that year. Still be contributing that. The last report I saw said, okay, once we produce the pension funding, because it's fully funded, that'll still be growing by four and a half percent a year. So on the pension side, it's growing by four and a half percent, which is bigger than our two and a half percent. Again, I keep thinking of the pension and OPEB funding, you know, it'd be nice to look at them side by side. So do we want to grow the OPEB a little slower?
Yep, fair enough, fair enough.
I have to jump off for the other meeting, as fascinating as this is. But I just warned you about the 20 year statement. I was here when we did the pension funding statement 20 years ago, and I'm still here, so. We'll take care.
We thank you for it.
I think that was part of my reason of requesting the two different funding schedules to because I think what is the town's goal? First and foremost, and versus let's just keep going down this path of transitioning the full amount, because that's kind of what we said we would. So I just wanted to kind of show the two different scenarios and then and to start this conversation. And obviously, we can continue to tweak it or do any research in the next few weeks to make any suggestions, changes that you'd like to see or or have a, you know, a further, a longer conversation about it if you if you'd like.
Yeah.
Nick, do we do? We want to include the statement at the end where we anticipate reaching full funding by FY 2026? Do we want to include that in the policy? Or is that, I mean, again, I, you know, you don't want to set yourself up for failure in policies, right?
I think we would want to indicate to the ratings agencies when we anticipate that happening, but we can certainly make the language softer.
No, that's I think anticipated is fine in terms of the language. The question in my mind is whether we want to include it all. But if 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 it's if it's something that will help with the rating agencies, then 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 we can do that, it seems to me. So I'm I am I I'm good with this, you know, if we soften the language on the the annual appropriation of 100K. And I I'd like to think about Jay's suggestion on revisiting the policy when it's a certain percent funded. And whether we want to put that language in specifically in there. Benefit of doing that, it seems to me, is that it gives you a benchmark when you have, you know, so it doesn't. So 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 people think about it, right? And and it doesn't doesn't just kind of fall away and no one thinks thinks about it, right? But if you have it in there and people actually consulting the policy every once in a while, and they say, hey, we're close to 50%. Let's now it's time to take a look at this again. That seems to me maybe a benefit. So that's the only thing. I don't know, Aaron, if you have any thoughts on that, that's the kind of the only thing I I'd really like to think about.
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay.
My, yeah, no problem.
Okay. So so Nick, I mean, I do you want to? Do you want to try to get a vote on this tonight? I don't know if we're on the agenda. Is this on the agenda tonight or do we want to do?
Not specifically. I think if we targeted the first first, second meeting in December, I think we'll we'll be on on still online and not too late for anything that we're doing. The ratings call with S and P isn't until mid-January, so we have at least three meetings after tonight to to work on this.
Is this on the agenda for tonight for discussion at all or no? I can't remember.
I'd have to double check. I think I put a placeholder just for a report from you.
Okay, so maybe we will. Yeah, so maybe we report on it and so so it gets on the radar of the other members. And then we can and then we can get a vote on it in December. And if we could make the revisions just to soften the language on the annual commitment. And and let's let's see if we can put in a something along the lines that Jay suggested about revisiting the policy when at a certain percent of funding, whether that whether that kind of makes sense.
Sure. So I just to clarify this, so there's the two commitments. So there's the first commitment, which is in the in the time between now and reaching full funding on the pension side that we do the $100,000. And there's the second commitment, which after full funding, the town shall appropriate to the OPEB trust the amount of equivalent to the former pension funding payment or the actuarial determined contribution, whichever is less. So I just want to make sure that I'm hearing that that's you're good to make that commitment in this policy at this point. Okay.
Yeah, that made sense to me.
Yeah.
And when we, I mean, just to clarify, when we said the former pension funding payment, what what we mean by that, and we may want to clarify what that means, but we mean the 100K?
No, we mean the 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 5 million figure that would be over and above what is what is required for normal cost on the pension side. So it's whatever we're paying to the pension unfunded liability, which about $5 million, $5.5 million in fiscal 26 would transition over the OPEB. That is the big commitment that this policy makes. That's where I want to make sure there's clarity and agreement on. And that's why I showed the 5 million versus the two and a half million dollar schedules to flush out whether that's where we want to go with it.
So we may want to flesh out that language, to use your terms, that language, because it confused me, so.
No, and I copied and pasted. I was trying to change it.
Yeah, no, I mean, so the form of pension pension funding payment, just if we want to, if we want to actually call out specifically what that is, that'll probably make it clear. And usually, if I can understand it, anyone can understand it. So that one, that one, that one, that one got past me, so.
And I had it that way, and then I changed it. So that's on me.
Yeah, Jay?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's a little bit more detailed than the the summary that I've heard all along, but I think it still could use some more detail. For example, I mean, as I pointed out to a couple of people, if we look at, you know, as an example, if we look at the most recent actuary report, which shows that it shows, I think, 27 and 28, where after the years after the pension funding will be reduced, what is the dollar amount we'd be putting into OPEB? Like, if I read the policy and if I ask myself, what's the dollar amount we'd be putting into OPEB? Can we answer that question? I think we need more detail, whether the details in the written poll, I need more detail.
Right.
I don't. I don't know what the dollar amount would be. And a second comment, and this this may be off topic, and this may be the drum I've been banging for three years, but the retirement committee is being very aggressive, is being not inappropriately aggressive, but they're being aggressive in raising the amount we contribute to the pension. not inappropriately aggressive, but they're being aggressive in raising the amount we contribute to the pension every year. That's fine. If we say we're gonna then start there, we're taking their aggressive increases in payments twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're locking the town into those then forever. We're saying the decisions they make are increasing the OPEB payments. Is that what we wanna do? Do we wanna tone it back just a little bit and say uh, if they weren't so aggressive, it wouldn't be five million dollars, it'd be four and a half million dollars, and maybe that fits the town's budget a little better. I think those are the, the two things I felt, is that I, I feel like needs more detail in saying exactly what is the dollar amount. And also think about where, the pension contribution each year is a half a million dollars more than it needs to be. It's a half a million dollars more now, it's a million dollars more next year. A million and a half the year after that, two million dollars a year after that. So then we're starting with an increased OPEB payment. Is that what we want? And one more thing, which is a little more nuts and bolts logistical. Does the money to pay for a retiree's medical benefits, does that flow through the OPEB trust right now? Does it go in the OPEB trust, which currently holds, uh, a million dollars? Does it go into that trust and then come out of it, or does it not even touch it?
I, Amy, can, I, I have a, I have a, I have a, I, I think I know, but Amy, you go ahead. You, you know, I'm sure you know.
It goes to the trust.
Oh, that's not the answer I was expecting, but that's a good answer. So then it'll be good. I was gonna suggest that, because then it'll be easier to get our hands around. Here's what we're paying for OPEB every year. It's what we're putting in the trust. Okay, great, thank you.
So, um, just if I can add a comment, just to put in perspective, um, number-wise, and how this discussion relates to the um, basic projection. In FY twenty in FY twenty-seven, when the pension is fully funded, five point four million dollars is being redirected from that line item in the operating budget to the OPEB trust funding. So five point four of the twelve point eight million dollar deficit is that, if that makes sense. Not necessarily that, but if you play with that number, that if you don't put the full five point four, that number could come down. So just wanted to mention that, to maybe give it a little bit more perspective.
Can you tell me where you got five point four from? I'm looking at the, uh, the chart from the actual report from a year ago.
So I'm just taking, there's, I, I think what you might be missing, and I don't have it exactly in front of me, is I have to, from the funding, I have to take out the, um, housing authority piece.
The hundred thousand?
It's somewhere around sixty thousand, something like that. So I, I mean, I don't have it all in front of me. But I, in the forecast, I took the funding right from the funding schedule, less than estimate for the Milton Housing Authority piece. Which we don't get that until, it's like point one percent or something. It's not large, but I don't know how much the number you're looking at is different than the number I used.
I mean, I, yeah, I, I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I took, so for instance, in twenty-six, the pension obligation on the funding schedule is nine million three seventy-five, three forty-nine, but I took point nine nine two one percent of that because the other one percent relates to the housing authority.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
That piece.
Okay.
The actual funding schedule, so Parrot will give me those details the year it's happening.
Okay, thank you. And so then you're saying the next year, OPEB plus pension would be nine three seven five, or ninety-nine percent of that, or something? Okay. And again, to put numbers around it, for fiscal year twenty-two, the amount we contributed to the pension was seven and a half million dollars. For fiscal twenty-six, it'll be nine point four million dollars. That's about a two million dollar increase. Again, reasonable people can disagree. Should we be increasing our pension contribution that much? But if we then say, and then we're locking it in for the next forty years, because that's what we're basing our OPEB comment, contribution on. I don't, I, i- is that what we want?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's a good point. Uh, it's a good point, Jay. I mean, you know, we're showing in, in this, in this projected budget. You know, and Amy, I think we're, we're showing, you know, almost eight million dollars in contributory retirement for FY twenty-three. And then that goes up to nine point three in FY twenty-six, and then it drops to three point eight in FY twenty-seven. Based on, based on our, those projections, right? Which is not insignificant, right? And then you get a, and then you get a slight increase in FY twenty-eight, but that's a, you know, you're talking about a, you know, five and a half million dollars. So that's the, that's the five point five. I see, that's about five and a half million when you go from nine point three to three point eight, and that from FY twenty-six to FY twenty-seven. Okay. Okay. All right, so, um, so let's, uh, let's introduce this tonight, uh, highlight a couple of the issues, and then plan to get it locked down, um, in December. All right. Anything else on, thanks, Jay. Anything else on item five? Item six is the ARPA Small Business Grant application. I think the last one we have on, uh, outstanding, we, we, the Boston Irish Tourism Association. We talked to the proprietor, I think, last time we were, or maybe two meetings, or last meeting? So, um, what's the, uh, what's the update on that?
That, I'll turn it over to Anne Marie.
Would you like me to? Thank you. We did, we spoke with, um, Colette at our last finance committee meeting. The finance committee was requesting more information regarding her website upgrade. She did send you an email on October, the end of October twenty-fifth, I believe. And she had more detail on the website upgrading. It was a ten-page document. She summarized it into a one-page document.
Yep.
And the cost, the, it was about twenty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars to upgrade her website with, um, website de- design, her branding, her search engine templates, social media branding and marketing.
I have to get, pardon me for a minute, I have to get that application. Do you have, you do have that in front of you? I don't know if you can.
I don't have it. And I'm not able to get into my emails for some reason. I, I'm just back. I was away for the weekend, so, um, I don't know, I can't get in.
Yeah, Marie, is that application in the drawer over here?
No, it was an email that she had sent.
Okay.
Um, on, at the end of October, October twenty-fifth. I just can't get into my emails for some reason. I, I don't know.
It's okay. I, I have it, I have actually the initial application. I just wanted to get the, the overall numbers.
She's looking for thirty thousand for her website development, and then the map update redesign, all of that. She's looking for twelve thousand. And the magazine expansion, she's looking for six, so the total is forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand.
I have the application in front of me.
Yep, yep. All right. Comments, questions, thoughts?
So, my, my initial thought was that the I don't do website redesign. My first thought was that there is a lot, I went to the website that she has, and there, they do need some work on, is corrupt on that. But she has a lot of members that pay funds to her. So it's a membership-based organization. So I'm just, there's a part of me that just really feels like either the website, the, the website cost is out of whack, or the graphic design cost is out of whack. It just, given the, the amount of membership that she has, I did some quick calculations, and I, I don't have that paper in front of me. But it just seemed like there was a lot coming in, um, and that the folks that were her members were other organizations and businesses, and, um, and I don't know if they took a hit. But she didn't reduce the amount of members she had on her website, so. I don't know. I mean, I, I'm, I'm open to, to conversations about it. I, I, I think I'd be willing to fund half of this. So either the website redesign or the map update. The website redesign, she does go into detail about what she would use it for, which makes me feel a little bit better about approving this and an audit that's could possibly come after. The map update redesign. That, I don't, you know, printing and distribution at three thousand. I don't, I don't know what that is, so. But I'm open to conversation about it, or your thoughts.
I- I- Anne Marie, do you have a recommendation on this?
Yes, I, I would suggest that the committee fund the, just the website design, which is approximately fifteen thousand. I know her website, um, is kind of old and archaic, and it does.
It is.
Yes, and her templates, um, she's not able to have people upload their documents. She has to then take the templates and, and retype everything, um, so. My recommendation would be, and, and this also is a, a company that is regional. It's not just, you know, a, a company in the town of Milton. It, it services Massachusetts, Rhode Island, a, a lot of different states, so, um. I think if, if I was to award her a small business grant, it would be for the fifteen thousand for the website design.
But what, what about the magazine expansion? She had six K for magazine expansion design and printing.
But again, she has, she has, as, as Ms. Bradley had mentioned, she has a, a healthy membership base. And, and I think that she would be able to cover those costs within that membership base. Because I too noticed that the membership base did not decrease during COVID. So I, I, and when she spoke at our last meeting, it was more about the website. She felt she needed help with her website, in order to bring it up, you know, and, and make it more user-friendly. But so that would be my suggestion, but you and, and Ms. Bradley can.
Oh, no, I, I understand. That's helpful, but, but she, she does have the thirty K for overall for the website, including the video production and the SEO and reporting. Which is another five K. And, and, and how do we, how do we get from the twenty-five to the fifteen on the website? Is that, is that just a?
It's a breakdown.
Yes.
Yep.
The website design was approximately fifteen thousand, and I, and I apologize, I, I can't get into my emails, and I don't know why.
I have it open, Anne Marie. The branding is thirty-seven fifty, Mike. The, the search engine optimization is twenty-five hundred. The email template is a thousand, which, if she has to reformat everything, I would suggest that we also fund that to make it easier for her website. There's social media branding at a thousand and marketing at six thousand. So with those additional costs, it comes to twenty-nine, two fifty.
Twenty-nine, two fifty?
Correct.
Anything in there, I mean, do we think that's a, do we think that's, that's fairly supportable? I mean, it seemed like, you know, and again, I don't have, I don't have the email open, but, but when I went through it, that seemed like it was fairly supportable. The branding I was wondering about, but, you know, that's, that was a pretty low number. But, um, if we did the twenty-nine, two fifty, do we think that's, do we think that's supportable, or is anything in there that, that, that's, that's kind of that's a little weak on the support?
So, so the marketing piece, that annual cost at six thousand, I'm wondering if that's what that magazine expansion is on her original.
Oh, yeah.
Do you see that? So is she double? I don't, I don't know if that's a double.
Yep.
So I wouldn't fund, personally, I don't think I, I can consciously vote for the marketing piece, because I don't, that just looks like it's a double. The social media branding, the email template, the search engine optimization, those three things all go with website, so I could see, see myself, um, being okay with that. The branding piece, uh, you know, I can be convinced either way, to be honest with you.
So, so that takes us to twenty-three, two fifty, and that includes the branding, which, which, which I think is fair. I mean, we've done that for a long time. So if we do twenty-three, two fifty, is that?
Yeah.
That's some, is that, I mean, I think that's something that we, that, that's, that's fully supportable, so.
Agreed.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, you want me to make a motion for that?
Sure.
Okay, um, I move to appropriate Boston Irish Tourism Association, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for their website design and development and other factors that go into that.
Say what, yeah, website design.
Yeah, okay, that'd be enough, right?
All right, and I will second. Um, any further discussions? All is in favor, Erin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Okay, all right. So, I, Nick, I can't remember. Did we put that on the agenda for tonight? Is that on? So we can, we can report that out and, and get that, to get that done, get that done tonight. Um, okay, good. Item seven is minutes, which I need to get for October sixth and fourteenth. I need to catch up on the minutes, so.
Mike, I can also, if it's okay with you, I think I was also taking notes, so I could draft something, um, if it's okay.
More than, more than okay.
I have to do some other minutes as well, um, today, so I'll just slap these into that.
Tremendous, great.
Okay.
Okay.
There may not be, uh, you, you may need to flush them out a little bit, but just so you know, I'll, I'll get you some votes.
Yeah, one of them, I, one of them, one of those meetings was the meeting we, we approved ARPA fundings, and I think I did.
Yes, I have.
I think I did an email, you know, with those votes, so you can just pull that out and put those.
Yeah.
I did a memo to the board with those votes.
That's right, you did. Yep.
Okay, all right, so that's, so we'll defer on item seven, and, uh, what do we got? Eight fifty-five? All right. Erin, is that a motion to adjourn?
Yes, that's a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-five. Sorry, that, yes, center of my breath is that.
All right, and second, all is in favor, Erin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, great. Um, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
Have a great day, everybody.
All right, take care.
Bye.